$3 submitted to the state. You gotta negotiate a contract.
It's time for another exciting town hall meeting. Might even be as exciting as Christmas in the creek.
At the public hearing for the community development block grant number 22 CV S20.
Notice anybody missing? Yep, Don the Con, the man who only lives a 30-second walk away. Can't make it on time. As a matter of fact, you're gonna see him get up and leave as well. Hold up, wait a minute. Who is these other people at the side of the table? They are not new council members. All right, the gentleman, that's Mr. Fred Fox. He's in charge of all of the grant money. He goes out, secures the money, and tells the town how to spend it, basically in a nutshell. And he's here to talk about the community center. Even though you're gonna hear him talking about the sidewalks as well, as part of the broadband money or the fiber optic money. Now, the female, the blonde, that is Megan. She is the new town attorney. You know, the attorney that Don the Con and Russ the Sus have been begging for? They're not gonna like what she has to say to them.
We have Mr. Fox to talk to us about it.
Yeah, let me explain all this. One of the things the states can require if we've been doing amendment is the signing sheet be submitted with it showing who is here. That's being passed around over there or somewhere in here.
We're talking real shit.
Since if you guys would sign as well.
The state has to legally have some type of form of attendance. The people who were there for the public hearing to get these funds for Otter Creek. And you see it passed, and that person refuses to sign it. I'm not sure that really matters since they're not a resident. But the state still wants to know everyone who was in attendance.
Just gonna have a full meeting. Basically, the state, at that point, Department of Equal Opportunity awarded the town a million four hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. This is all this handout. If you don't have a handout, come get one. For to put in broadband, put in what they call the backbone, the basic system. And then the drops, which would go in the right of way. And then for people that qualified, and I'll go into a minute with what I mean by qualified. It's an income qualification. We would also hook up their home and give them six months' worth of free service.
Let me frame this properly so we all understand what's happening. This is a public hearing about 1.4 million dollars that was granted to Otter Creek. How did Otter Creek get it? Well, the money was designated for low-income housing, low-income rural areas that need better opportunities. And so the state government says, what's better than fiber optic? What's better than the internet? If we can get on the internet, we can reach out to the world, and we can better ourselves. And so they said, here's the money to do it. But the local electric company came in and just started doing it anyway. They took some of the funds and went, we're gonna put it in. So now there's this pool of money, and we don't know exactly what to do with it. And there's been discussion. Is there gonna be a community center? Are we gonna put sidewalks in? Oh, are we gonna give it back? And the board's already voted. They voted community center. Except we find out in this meeting, uh, no, no, that doesn't count because you have to have a public hearing. But we already thought we had a public hearing because Mr. Fox has already been here before at the last hearing and said all these things and said, you need to make a decision immediately. And so they did. And now they're going round and round about this again.
Okay, so the budget, and you've got it here, that we had in the grant was administration is 198,150. And the bulk of that from our, that would be us mostly, and the bulk of that as far as our workload is we have to qualify everybody that wants to be hooked up with grant funds and get the six months' worth of free service and verify their household income is under this certain amount. So that's what I view as the bulk of what we're gonna have to do on top of managing the grant and doing the environmental review and all that. The engineering fee is 203,003. The engineer, his workload on the COVID grant is now gonna be limited to basically from the box in the right-of-way to the homes. Basically, what we'll do is we'll do a request for proposals for firms that are interested to give us quotes. And I'm gonna jump around here.
What Mr. Fox is basically trying to say is engineering costs to get fiber optic to each home in Otter Creek is gonna cost less because Central Florida Electric already came in and put all the infrastructure in. They've got all the main lines run. They've been running it to and from my tower that's out front of my driveway. It's out front of the schoolhouse. It's all there. The only thing that has to happen is to pull it from the box, from the road, to each individual house. Therefore, that 1.4 million dollars for fiber optic, now we only need a few hundred thousand, which leaves leftover money. And what are we gonna do with it?
One of the things that's happened since we did this is the Department of Commerce, which is the same agency as the Department of Economic Opportunity. At the last legislative session, they changed the name of the agency. So it was DEO, now it's Department of Commerce, or Commerce Department, the same agency. They established a broadband office. The feds gave them a whole bunch of money for broadband in rural areas. And the Central Florida Electric Co-op applied and received funding from the broadband office for Otter Creek. But not for the, it's not a total, it's the same thing. It includes a backbone system on the poles, and it's gonna include the drops to the boxes in the right-of-ways. But that's as far as it goes. After that, it would be, under their grant, it would be up to, if you wanted to hook up, you have to pay for the hookup and pay whatever the monthly fee was. So while there's some things that both grants do, there's things that only one grant does. Our grant does. Having said all that, we have to go out and do a request for proposals for a firm. And since the Electric Co-op is gonna, Central Florida Electric Co-op is gonna have the hardwiring in, we can't ask and use these grant funds for somebody else to come in and run another line like AT&amp;T or Comcast. They're not, the federal government has to pay for two different companies to run the same kind of line to serve the same people. So that's not an option. What we will do when we do, when we have to do the request for proposals is we'll say, hey, you know, if you wanna come in here and spend your money and put in the hardwire and you basically do everything that Central Florida Electric Co-op is doing, and then you wanna give us a bid of what you're gonna charge for the monthly hookup and to hook up the house and the monthly service, you could be competitive. Now theoretically, we don't think anybody's gonna do that. We think it's gonna be Central Florida Electric Co-op ends up with the service here. But we have to go through the process of opening it up and giving other people the opportunity. So that's part of it. So what I was gonna say is the engineering is a lot less than what was proposed initially, and that should reduce the price. There's currently no contract in place with the engineer for this. It's been advertised. There's a large firm that the town selected to work with.
Remember when they voted $25,000 a year minimum permitting guy? Well, that's who he's referring to. That's the one.
But there's no contract, to my knowledge. So however, if you decide to do something else, and one of the things that has been talked about is community center, whatever you're free up in your engineering fees for the broadband is probably gonna end up being going toward the design and bidding and inspection services for the community center. So I don't, assuming that's the way you go, and we're just, this is a discussion tonight. It's probably gonna still take most of that 203,000 for the engineering services. Then there's the 970,860. That included the backbone, the drops, and then it also included the household hookups. Well, now we're down to the household hookups. So depending on what the provider that's finally chosen, which are gonna probably be the Central Florida Electric Co-op, whatever they charge to hook up, it'll be just for the ones that qualify under the grant. But it's gonna take a portion of that 970,000. We're estimating it's something under $100,000, but that's just an estimate. And finally, the 54,330 is for the six months' worth of service for those that qualify. So going down, let me go down to the bottom of this page. When I talk about income levels to qualify, basically, if you have a household income of less than 35,950 and you live by yourself, we would have to document that income. And you have to fill out an application, but you would technically qualify if you wanted it.
So if you're at what the government calls poverty level, and they draw the line, you heard the amount, you can get free fiber optic for six months. And then after that, what do you do? Well, remember, the government said, you're below the poverty line. You have to pay for it.
And nobody's gonna be forced to take it. And then the second one is 41,100 for a family, a household of two. 46,250 for a household of three, and so on. You've got it at the bottom of the page. The ACT, which is, there's a federal program where you can apply directly to the federal government for up to $30 a month pages to help offset your service costs. But you can't do both. You can do one or the other. And for, you look at the household sizes. It starts out for a family of one, it's 29,160, which is definitely less than the 35,950. But as you go up to a larger household size, at at three, you start getting into, people can make above 46,250, but under 49,720, and apply directly for the federal funding instead of what we're offering. And after the 330, after the six months, anybody can apply for the federal funding. It qualifies. That's where the front page, and then see. And again, because of the federal prohibition, you couldn't say, well, we don't really like Central Florida Electric Co-op. We don't think they're gonna do a good job for us. We wanna have somebody else do the whole thing. But that's called a duplication of benefit, and the federal government won't allow that. So once Central Florida Electric Co-op has their grant, unless somebody else is willing to put all the backbone in at their own dime, at their own cost, Central Florida is gonna do, when we get through the, going through the procurement process, it's probably gonna be easier for them.
So nice of Don the Con to actually show up for today's meeting. Watch him. The very first thing he does is he grabs his $100 check, and he folds it up, and he puts it in his pocket. Now, do you think he earned it when he didn't even show up on time? Oh, by the way, keep your eye on him. He's also going to leave.
So that's basically just been about 800,000, maybe 850,000 being deobligated because of the broadband award, broadband office award to Central Florida. And then the question here tonight is, do you want to just deobligate that? Do you want to use it for another project that's eligible? The two that are eligible under this program, again, this is COVID funding, would be a community center, and be a small community center, because 850,000 in today's world doesn't build a lot.
You heard that, right? $850,000 in today's world doesn't build a lot. A million dollars in today's world is literally not much. It's not much at all, especially in a building project. So I'm not sure what they actually hope to receive by building a community center because the expenses are going to outweigh the benefit. Remember, barely even anybody will come to the town hall meeting. What do you think they're gonna do with a community center? And you're gonna see here in just a little bit. He's gonna talk about how they're gonna present it to the government for the grant. Basically, Otter Creek is going to lie to the government. That's nothing new for guys like Russ the Sus and Don the Con. But for a resident like me and the council co-ents that can come from that, I'm not comfortable with it at all.
But the reasoning for it, even though we don't need it like what we did, would be to use the center for shots, for medical checkups for that for COVID, under the grant. Now, probably they're never gonna be used for that in reality. But that's, that would be the way we present it to the state. Because that was the way the original ones were presented that decided to do community centers. And then the other option would be in your residential areas, putting in sidewalks. And that's good, you're not gonna cover too many areas because you've got ditches. And in order to put sidewalks where the drain, stormwater ditches are, you'd have to pipe the ditches, put the water somewhere. You're looking at retention, so you might do a block or two of sidewalks. That's gonna eat up 870,000 bucks to the heart of you. That's sort of the presentation. I mean, it's not, and I'll open it up to you guys, whatever questions you have, whatever comments you wanna make.
Now, if I understood right, you guys would handle the qualifying for the, to see if it qualifies, the application.
Yeah, my son David is back there, and he'll be in charge of that.
Melissa mentioned that you guys have set up something here.
We will be contacting everybody. Once, we're still trying to get some direction out of Department of Commerce as to what kind of documentation they're gonna require. David runs our housing program primarily, and under that, he would actually have to take the application and write into the, like to the business of somebody who works and get independent verification of their salary. We're thinking we may be able to get it by getting copies of the bank statements or something. But until we get a clear definition of that from the state. We're gonna do whatever the state requires. But we will be contacting everybody. Maybe start out with a letter, and from that, when you respond, we'll set up times to take your applications.
And we're having a meeting here, and we're gonna take your personal information at that time. But get, give you the information that you need to fill out. Tell you what we need when you submit it back, and then you would submit it to town hall, or you could submit it to us directly if you'd like. But I think we would start with an initial meeting, so you could get your, at least give you some idea of what we're gonna need and get your picture.
Yes, sir.
This would only cover existing residents, not new residents?
Say that again.
This would only cover new residents that currently live here. What about?
If somebody is living in the town of Otter Creek, and they meet the income requirements, they would, that household would qualify, yes. There's no, you don't have to be living here when the application was put in. If you're living here now, and it's also gonna be for rental units. Now, the one exception on a rental unit is we're gonna need, also work with a property owner to get permission to go on their property to run the lines. Because obviously, we can't just go on there and run lines on a rental property, and the owner go, you tore up my grass, what are you doing?
But to qualify as a rental unit, it's the income of the people in the house, whoever's renting it, it's not the owner.
Yeah.
It's based on the occupant's income.
It's the occupant's income. So in fact, that's a rental unit. If the owner makes over this, that doesn't matter. It's what the tenant makes.
Just like the government having all these new forms to fill out and getting all of your financial information all over the place if you're serving in any type of capacity in the government and the state of Florida, now they're gonna get all your financial information as well to give you broadband for six months. I'm not comfortable with that. Now, I know some of you are thinking, okay, well, you're not comfortable with it because you're trying to hide something. Absolutely, I'm trying to hide something. I'm trying to hide all of my assets from theft. I have people literally stalking me and begging me for money. I'm trying to hide something. Nobody needs to know what my income is, what my net value is, what my worth is, everything I own, because that's how theft happens. Now, if we publicly put it out there for other people in Otter Creek, I'm not comfortable for those individuals either because I don't think other people need to know what other people make. And yet, I understand the aspect that the federal government isn't going to gift it, which really, it's not a gift. It's tax money. It's money that you and I pay, right? And then it's going to other individuals. It's not a gift. It was actually taxed on somebody. But they're not gonna give it unless they understand, all right, there's a threshold of income. So I'm conflicted in this going, okay, the government's taking my taxes, your taxes. They're giving it to somebody else who's at an income level. And, but will they continue to be able to afford it? And now they're trying to get their personal information? I mean, for me, it's this whole circle of, frankly, a mess of information that people honestly, they just don't need to know. Your private information should remain private.
Any more questions, or do you have anyone to come up with some ideas or things I'd like to see?
So we have determined that we are going to use the balance of our grant towards our community center?
I don't think you have. That's gonna take a motion at a council meeting.
Okay.
And the purpose of this, and apparently it's gonna be the January meeting, would be to make that decision, if that's what y'all want to do.
They already made the motion.
Yeah, we already did that.
For today's purpose, you would need, I guess, to open it up for a public hearing.
Public hearing's gotta come before the final one.
Oh, okay.
And then.
The whole idea of getting public input before you make, the council makes that decision.
And then close the public hearing, you can either get a later motion or...
Well, they don't have it on the agenda. It's not the January meeting.
Because we talked about it and tasked you.
We talked about it, but you can't make the formal decision later.
Some of you have probably heard Mr. Fox talk about this before. Because you did. And I was under the impression that was the public hearing, and there were questions asked, and there were answers given. And he literally said in that meeting, you need to make a decision immediately. Now, I'm not gonna flash back to it. But now he's saying, no, 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 you didn't make a decision. Nope, there was nothing, yeah, gotta do this. Now, in January, you gotta make a decision. Remember, Don was against it. Russell was for it. It's gonna be interesting to see what happens in January.
So that wasn't a public hearing that you spoke about?
Tonight's a public hearing.
Before?
No, we have a public hearing.
Okay. But I know you still want to have a public hearing.
Public hearing has to go in, and notice that's going in the newspaper. And it's gotta go in at least six days before the meeting. So this is the public hearing for the rest of the funds. What we think is gonna be deobligated. And then from this, apparently, since it's not on their agenda tonight, they'll have to put it on their January agenda to make a formal motion to utilize the funds for the community center. And then we'll do, prepare an amendment package and send it up to Department of Commerce. And we're already doing some others because they're, I've got four similar grants to this that are COVID, that are COVID broadband grants. And one community center has put theirs in. One, we're just trying to figure out what they've got, quite honestly, whether there's been some broadband put in independent of any of the grants. And we're trying to do an analysis to see where we have high-speed internet in that community. Well, we know, as a fourth one, they're trying to set up a meeting with the broadband office because we know that they funded a portion of that sound. Not the whole city. We don't know exactly where they funded. And for whatever reason, they're having a hard time setting up that public hearing. Public meeting, well, it's a team's meeting, internet meeting. And I'm not sure why. We could, but that's where the four are. We've got others that are other projects, but those are the four that are specifically broadband.
Do we have a timeline yet?
The grant ends, I wanna say it's either, I think it's April 26th. So, but in government time, that's not a lot of time. There's basically, you gotta decide which way you wanna do the community center. Processes have a meeting next month. We'll do the amendment, $3 submitted to the state. You gotta negotiate a contract.
Did you just see that? I just saw it. You know, beginning of the meeting, Russell walks in, Russell walks out. He gets on his phone, probably calls a resident of Otter Creek and says, hey, 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 just letting you know, Jeremy and George are here. Okay, now Don walks in and walks out. And Don actually gets in his vehicle and he leaves. You go, how do you know that? Well, because there's somebody outside recording Russell on the phone, recording Don getting in his vehicle and leaving. There's somebody always recording something everywhere.
With the engineering firm for the broadband, so you know how much you're gonna have to pay them, you're gonna, and then you're gonna advertise and select probably an architectural or architectural slash engineering firm to design the community center. And then while we're doing all that, we're gonna have to do, revise your environmental review because right now it's just the broadband, and now it's gonna go broadband and community center, which for us, there's a lot more work in the environmental review associated with community center because people don't walk into a COVID. There's no, the door, but for sidewalks and for buildings where people go into, like community center, we've actually go with a mile radius. We have to go up and down the street. We normally do, we don't do it, we do it visually, we do it online. And if there's any gas tanks, and how many people have natural gas in their homes, tanks over 100 gallons, we have identified them. And then if they present a threat, if they clue up to the residents, we have to deal with that. So there's a lot more for the environment, for our environmental side for the community center than there is for the broadband. Just part of us regulations.
Is our timeline good?
Excuse me. We're one minute till 6:49.
The reason why Vice Mayor Zim is bringing up the time right now is because there's actually three meetings tonight. There's this public hearing on the grant. Then there is another meeting on the trim taxes because Don and Russell didn't show up last time, which, by the way, cost the town another $1,000 into having this meeting and broadcasting. I'm not even gonna go into it all. And it should have never even happened that way. Russell should have been there. And then there's the actual town hall meeting as well.
If someone else has anything else at this meeting, if we need to make it continuous till later tonight, or are we good enough at this point in time to close this out? Good.
That's public hearing adjourned.
Also, the town's got our contact information. If you've got any questions you wanna ask me, just give us a call.
If you're gonna have to go along, I'll get updated where we stand. You can just step behind everybody and not be leading others, you know, wherever.
Yeah, basically, once I get some, it's gonna be a January meeting now. Clear direction that you're gonna do a community center. We'll start revised environmental review, and we'll do the amendment. Any questions? We got yours? We got Don's? It's 7:50, it's, I mean, 6:50. Don's asked us to hold the call for a minute, give us back. Are we, should we go, you know, we have to stop the meeting and just wait? Or we?
It's, that is for 6:50. I mean, if you wanna, you still have a quorum present.
I like this new lawyer already. Don wants them to wait for him. But no, she says, no, you scheduled it. It starts at that time, and you have a quorum present. You move forward. It's Don's responsibility to be here. Don's negating his responsibility by not being here. Therefore, the meeting goes on. Oh, by the way, she gets into it with Don later in the meeting as well. Maybe I said that wrong. It's literally Don who gets into it with her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. You missed your process.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Y'all take a great day. Where's it at now?
What do you?
Signing the check.
Oh, the only people who didn't sign in was Richard and Ali. All right, at 6:50, we're gonna start the public hearing for the term and budget.
Special meeting?
Special meeting? Okay. All right, since there was not a quorum at the last one, we're going to do this tonight. The first thing we have is the resolution number 202307. It's an amended resolution of the town of Otter Creek of Levy County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the town of Otter Creek for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, and providing an effective date. I think that's a special meeting and not a public hearing, if there's any questions or anything.
That's all?
Okay.
So it was just a clerical error on forms, incorrect clerical error?
Correct.
Okay. Um, make a motion to do, correct the motion, correct it, send it back in before we lose our benefits.
All right, I have a motion to approve resolution number 202307. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Zavala coming back?
Yeah, he said he had to run for five minutes. I don't know, but he might have forgot something or had to use the restroom, I'm not sure.
Whew! You see Russell, he's just, you see it in his face, like, whew, Don's back, all right, I'm not outnumbered anymore. It's two to two.
I'll read it over again. So we started the special meeting for the TRIM and the budget. We have an amendment for resolution number 202307. It's an amended resolution of the town of Otter Creek. There was a clerical error in it. Do you have that paper? Did you read through it? It's adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the town of Otter Creek for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, and providing an effective date. There's a motion to approve the resolution. Do I hear a second?
Exactly why did we have to do it over again?
There was a clerical error, and then it wasn't printed correctly in the newspaper. They didn't do the right size, so they had to change the numbers. And the other one in number four, it'll tell you there was a mathematical error, and it changed the amounts, so it had to be re-advertised.
You mean from the 326, 328?
Uh, it went from 326 to the 340.
At 326, it should not have been 328?
And here we go, with repeating the same thing, over and over and over again.
Our budget summary of the 16, that is the number.
I don't know if we're, when I can answer that question, if we're going to, can we, can we get a second and then get into discussion? I mean, that would be more appropriate, and even, even the second doesn't mean you agree with it, you're just advancing the motion so that you can have this discussion.
Yeah, it's fine.
Second?
Are you seconding it?
I didn't see I'm seconding, because it's fine to, to go forward. Who made the motion?
Sam.
Okay. All right, I'll make the second, that's what it takes to go on.
Okay.
So he's asking about the difference on the, between the numbers.
I put in the clerical error he was talking about.
The 26 and 28?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
It was, and this is the correct number, they said it is correct, except we have to blow on it and turn it back in, over the news, we're actually starting to lose time now, because it's about 10:00 a.m. Stay. The news work. Well, I would leave, we just, or just go pass it.
You asked a question, so she was looking at that.
She's just trying to...
He wants to know what the holdup is. He's obviously the holdup, and obviously incapable of serving well on this board. He has a number of things that are issues, and if you don't have the competency to serve in that function, you should have the decency to step down.
It's, you know, just, it's just on, I was wondering if that was the error, that's all.
Yeah. That amount, yeah.
Right, that's all you had to say. And that's there.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of passing resolution number 202307? Say aye.
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 We got to pass it, we got to pass it to get the tax money.
Yep. So now Russell has to verbally coach Don out loud and set a secret text under the table.
Since I voted against him originally, I'm going to have to maintain that vote.
Okay. So make a note that Don is opposed, and the motion carries forward with resolution number 202307. And the next one we'll be voting on is resolution number 202308. It's an amended resolution of the town of Otter Creek of Levy County, Florida, providing for the appropriation of funds of the town of Otter Creek for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024, providing for general fund revenues and general fund expenditure, and providing an effective date. Do I hear a motion to pass resolution number 202308?
Always a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Zim. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Don's opposed, motion carries, resolution number 202308 goes forward. All right, and was there any other comments or questions about that, or from anybody? All right, so that special meeting is adjourned.
Next is the regular meeting, where Don gets into it with the new attorney. You don't want to miss it.